Sophie Knows?
Yes.
Carolyn Rye, School Board Chair, we are reconvening our workshop after this 10-minute break, and we are beginning the next session, Parliamentary Procedures and School Board Meetings. So with that, I am welcoming School Board Legal Counsel, Mrs. Kami Lanetti.
Good afternoon, School Board Members, and Dr. Spence, I'm Kami Lanetti, School Board Legal Counsel, and I'll be presenting the section on Parliamentary Procedures and School Board Matters. Just for purposes, we will try, we'll be working with the PowerPoint that is on the board, but for School Board Members who are participating remotely, I did email to you around 10 o'clock this morning this PowerPoint. I also emailed to you a form that we'll be talking about how to write amendments on, and if you needed them, I emailed you copies of Appendix A and Appendix B of the School Board Bylaws, if there's some reason you need to refer to them. So you do have those in your email, we can pull them up. At this time, I'm going to be presenting on the parliamentary procedure. That's what I'm moving forward. Okay. There's nothing I'm going for. Okay, there we go. Talking about why I brought this particular topic to you for a mini-retreat, it has been brought to my attention numerous times the last couple of years. People have asked questions about parliamentary procedure, why do we do what we do? You saw some of that in the Protocols Manual. While working through the Protocols Manual, we were working through some of those issues, and you saw a lot in the last six months, as we were working through the Protocols Manuels, we were mending bylaws that deal with procedures on there. So you've seen a lot of this back and forth in the last couple of months, we're trying to become consistent. But I thought I would talk to you today a little bit about parliamentary procedure. I will do it slow for you, fast for me, down there, or the other way around, depending how fast we go. I'm going to cover some of these topics on there. I'm not going to give you all the topics, parliamentary procedure is a gigantic subject to cover. There are many opportunities, often at the Virginia School Board Association, National School Board Association, you will see national experts in parliamentary procedure that will be out there. You can find a lot of this online. If you want to learn more about some of these topics, we can delve into that, we can bring them back at other times. You do have the opportunity to make some decisions on this. So in addition to me going over some basics of parliamentary procedure, I'm going to also then bring up topics periodically for you to discuss. Many times, the stuff you have talked about in meetings, it is things that you discussed, actually, for some of it today, but other times, people have called and been concerned about how we're doing procedures, and they may not actually be a procedural law or parliamentary rule, but they're things that you can make decisions on. So I will note this for you, so you can talk about them today. I've had numerous times during the last two years where I've had a School Board Member say, "Well, I don't think that committee should talk about this. I think we as a whole should talk about this." So I retreat an appropriate topic to bring them. So I will bring those to your attention. I'm not sure that we will get through all of them, but when possibly we do get through all of them, then we'll open the floor to other things you want to discuss. This would be your time period to discuss how you want to do this. It's not my intent to beat you over the head with parliamentary procedure, I'm going to point out some areas and reasons to help you have a discussion among yourselves about how you conduct your meetings, and so that hopefully you'll come to some agreement as to why you do what you do, or to understand why some of your colleagues are covering some of the issues there. The first step is to talk about what is the purpose of parliamentary procedure. Parliamentary procedure, and there are many forms, you can see. Most people refer to what we call Robert's Rules of Order. This is one of the most commonly used forms. On there, there are other parliamentary procedures. The purpose of parliamentary procedures is for organizations that need to conduct business. First of all, the first purpose is to ensure that business is taken up one thing at a time in an orderly manner. The second one is to promote courtesy and partiality and equality. And the third one is to understand the rule the majority, allow the rule of the majority to go forward, but also protect the rights of individuals, the minority and absent members of that particular body. It should allow you, the minority, to argue against a motion, and that should be understood by the party, the party, that the minority has the right to explain to the rest of the majority why they don't agree with the motion, and they have, and it's actually, they're due to point out where they see errors in that. And it should, the minority should not interpret argument made by the minority position as inappropriate. It is their obligation to do that. However, what typical parliamentary procedure does is allow the opportunity to argue, present, amend, but once a vote is taken, the expectation is that the minority should then concede that the majority has won on this particular vote on there, and they should support the majority. Now, that doesn't mean that they forever have to support it, they can follow other parliamentary procedures for bringing the matters back to be re-voted on, but once it's adopted by the majority, that is the will of the entire board. It's not the majority's decision, it is the entire board's decision, and by participating as part of the board, you're expected to go forward with what the board has decided to do. Again, a minority member who wants to bring that back, there are procedures, and we'll talk about some of them, and there are procedures to do that, and it is appropriate to do that, and they should not be held against them for doing such.
I'm getting feedback from the outside that they can't understand you. If you could lift that up and speak, okay? And just slow down a little bit, yes? Thank you. I don't know, it might.
All right, with that in mind, we'll move on to the next one. Susan, do you have the building of this on? Yes, I'm sorry. All right. One of the basic concepts that we call is decorum. Hello? Okay, I'll put it up there. One of the concepts is decorum. On there, why is that important in meetings? One, it's for the orderly and regular transition of school board, transaction of school board business. It's to ensure that meetings are conducted in an open and orderly manner, allowing speakers to address the school board in the order in which they're called up, allow persons in attendance and observing the meeting to do so without disruption, minimize inappropriate language and conduct for students observing meetings, that's unique to school boards, because there may be individuals under 18-years-old who are participating in the meeting because they have an interest in them, we want to be careful about the language that we're using that's appropriate for them. It also requires that the chair preserves decorum and decides questions of public order subject to appeal by the school board. So somebody requests something, it goes to the chair, not individual members of the board. If you disagree with the decision that the chair makes, then you appeal to the entire board, and the board then votes on it. But otherwise, the chair is granted the duty of maintaining decorum in the room. All right, so let's talk basic concepts, go on to main mission, main motion, I'm sorry. Okay, what is the main motion? That is how you bring business before the school board. Remember, bringing the motion can amend or withdraw without permission if the motion is not yet before the school board. So let's say Mrs. Felton makes a motion that she wants to have french fries for every munch, every day at lunch at this point, and before it gets, the chair says, "We are now opening the vote on it," or she gets a second, she says, "Don't change that, I only meant Tuesdays and Thursdays," she can amend that without going forward. Your usual procedure is if a second has been made, and the second had heard what the initial motion was, that the second should also agree whether she's going to agree to the amended motion, Mrs. Felton amends that motion. That's for the purpose of, the second doesn't necessarily agree, there should be discussion on it. Again, just basic procedure, the member can change her mind prior to it open. Once that vote goes, when the chair says it's now open for debate, that's what a second does. A second does not mean you agree with the motion, it just means, "I agree, we should discuss it." Once a second is made, and the motion is repeated for the body to understand what you're going to be debating, that motion then belongs to the entire board that's debating. It does not belong to Mrs. Felton anymore to talk about french fries, it belongs to the entire board at that time to talk about, you own it. You get to then decide what's going to happen with that motion, and that's where the subsidiary motions are going to come in. I will point out for you, one of the issues we had, Mrs. Manning brought up to me after last week, in your standing rules, you interchange the words amendment and substitute. Substitute isn't generally used in part of the procedure, it's an amendment on there. That may be something we need to look at, whether you want to continue to use those terms, or you want to define them out, but for your rules, you say amendment or substitute. You can amend or substitute on any particular motion on there, if it's not a certain type of motion, we'll talk about it in a minute, on there, but admission, and then a substantive motion shall be decided before the original motion. So again, we've got to follow, we've got to be more careful about our amendments, you need to understand the order in which it is. The pending motion on the floor should whatever be the most recent motion, so if it's an amendment on there, then that should be what you're discussing, you don't go back and talk about the original motion. In normal parliamentary procedure, the understanding is that will do be no more than two amendments at one time, so main motion, amended motion, somebody else could make a motion to that. You're not supposed to go lower than that, but you can make your own rules if you want to do that. It's generally been our practice to not do more than two motions. Mrs. Manning pointed out to me, then our standing rules, number six, it is a little confusing, that came up the other night, that may be something we want to look at to clarify. Do you want to limit to two motions, amendments, and what wording do you want to use for that? Again, we don't have to decide that at the moment, but that was one area that we need to point out. If a motion under debate has two or more parts that can be divided up, Mrs. Felton says, "I want french fries and milk," and you say, "I want to just vote on french fries first," you could ask for it to be divided up, that's a legitimate reason to break up the vote. Again, once voting commences, there should be no further debate or comment unless there's been a mistake, because you want to say, "Mrs. Rye, I think we're voting on the main motion, we should have been voting on the amendment," that's appropriate, but I saw that a couple of times the last couple of meetings, where people were going back to the original motion and not sticking on to whatever the current amendment is, and then people were confused when you went to vote. So again, we want to be a little bit more careful about some of those motions. Talking about comments or debate on a motion, there we go. Again, one of the areas I see that is a problem, I see, I've seen it more in the last year than I've seen in a while, we go back to decorum issues on there. When you maintain decorum, it maintains the importance of the meeting, it makes everybody feel respected. In normal parliamentary procedure, you should refer to the person by the position, Madam Chair, or Mrs. Rye on there, or sometimes to the previous speaker. What I'm seeing people devolve to a lot is first names. And again, we all know each other, but the people in the public don't always know us on there. I also see when people get very angry, they start calling people by their first name, and that's just a lack of respect, and to understand that you're the tribunal and the board that you are, you're attempting to maintain decorum, and you're dealing with the issue, you should always be addressing the issue, not the person that you're talking to on there. You shouldn't be, Mrs. Felton shouldn't get mad at Mrs. Rye because Mrs. Rye doesn't like french fries. Mrs. Felton should be addressing issues having to do with french fries. So one of the basic things you do is maintain first name, the first name is maintain either the title, Madam Chair, or Mrs. Franklin, use the first name. And that's, I think, just a common thing to remind everybody that we're being respectful to each other, and again, we know each other very well, but the public doesn't always understand that, and when you slip back and forth during a meeting, it starts to suggest to people that you've lost respect for people. So again, I would strongly suggest that you talk about referring to each other as the, by your first name. One of the other things, again, as I mentioned, when your matter's on the floor, you are addressing the issue on the floor. You're not addressing whether Mrs. Riggs made a good comment, or whether you agreed Mrs. Riggs. In fact, you actually should be addressing to the chair, she's conducting the debate, so if you're doing a debate, you're really pretty much looking to the chair, discussing her. One of the tricks that you do this, is I would like to speak to this motion, as to the previous speakers, or my opinion on the motion is, not Mrs. Riggs that are, I don't like what you had to say about that. Another area you need to talk, worry about, is what they call the cross-talk between issues, if you start talking to each other, or somebody talks to somebody on the other side without being in their turn. It's not a discussion between School Board Members about whether you like each other, it is a debate by the whole body, and you need to follow that. So again, I'd like to see some talk among yourselves about how you will handle that. Again, it should not be, you be talking to the issues, you should not be talking to the members or their personalities, whether you like them, whether you agree with their political strategies on there, you should be talking to the issue that is before you are debating. Again, normal rule is each member gets to speak before any member speaks a second time. You don't have that currently in your rules, it was there a number of years ago, but what you should be doing, and I think your vice chair is normally the one who maintains a list, but if you see Mrs. Anderson coming up for a second time, you probably want to look around the room, and you want to say, "Does anyone else want to speak on that before I allow Mrs. Anderson a second turn?" Because sometimes people are waiting patiently for their turn, and you just saw somebody raise their hand, and because we're doing people electronically, you're not always seeing where people come up electronically. So one of the better practices to be, would be just to say, again, everybody on the first time, if you have done your first time, then you open it up for a second time. Parliamentary rules are generally that you can speak two times on an issue, total of 10 minutes each, that is not in your bylaws, it was years ago, but it was taken out. I don't know if that's something you want to look at again, but what that allows is a reasonable amount of time to get through a topic and come back to it. You can talk about whether you want more turns on this, or whether you want to extend the time period. Again, that used to be held pretty strictly, we're not doing that lately, so individuals can often talk for 20 or 30 minutes at a time. That's something I'd like you to discuss today about whether it's something you wanted to do. And again, these are rules that you can decide how you want. One of the issues with Robert's Rules of Order is people assume that you must follow them absolutely, but it actually says, if you are a group of under 22, you can have your own rules. You don't have to do Robert's Rules, you can make up your own rules, and that's actually what you do with your standing rules. So when in doubt, you could go back to those. And again, debate, debate should be determined to the issue on the floor, don't devolve back to another issue, don't go ahead to another issue, don't bring up something on the outside, stick to the main issue so you can keep your business going. Does anyone want to discuss any of the issues that I just talked about? I don't see anybody requesting.
I mean, for me, I'd rather wait to see how much time we have, but if anybody else has an immediate question here, I'm just, I made a notation about the speaker time, you know, as a future discussion item, whether that's today or another day, but...
And I will say, that's, that will come up later on one of the slides, but this point is just talking about you all when I'm speaking speakers, right now it's just members speaking on that.
No hands raised?
No.
No.
All right. Can we move this forward? Yeah, all right, so we mentioned the main motion. By your agenda, you set forward what your main motions are to be on there, and what actually tells you as to what you're going to be asked to do should be your agenda cover sheet, should be, the PRC is asking you to adopt the following policies, that is the motion you're making. So if you're not sure what your motion is, you should be looking at your agenda cover sheet. If it is not clear on your agenda cover sheet, then someone will need to make a motion to clarify it. So now we're going to talk about secondary motions, and this is where people get confused a lot, and this is a hot topic in most parliamentary procedures. I am not going to go into detail on every one, I'm just going to identify some of the issues so you understand the purposes, we can talk about it another time, or you could certainly look this up on your own. There are actually five classes, I'm going to mention three on secondary motions. There is a subsidiary, there's a privilege, there's an incidental motion, and there are motions that bring a question back again before the body. Secondary motions are not main motions, they help the school board decide what to do with the main motion, and how to get things done during a meeting. So understand, if somebody's making a secondary motion, you're trying to move it forward or get to a resolution on that. First off, with privileged motions, they do not relate to the main motion, they're trying to clarify something or get some information. They usually have to do with a special matter of immediate importance, they need to be taken up right away, that's why they have a higher priority in other motions on there. They're not debatable. When we mean debatable, that means, once somebody makes a motion, you do require a second, there are occasionally some that you don't need to have a second on, but most of the time, you need a second. Once you've got a second, you don't open it up as to whether, you're just simply going to vote on that motion. Typical ones that you see is a fixed time to adjourn. Adjourn means let's shut it down right now. A fixed time means let's stop at 1:00 a.m. in the morning, so that's the difference between the two. So because if you want, setting a specific time, it's a little bit higher than adjournment, take a recess, we need a break, question of privilege, I didn't understand, Mrs. Madam Chair, where we are in the procedures, the Madam Chair, can I get a clarification, clarifications, or what they call calls for order of the day. Basically, wait a minute, that's not the next agenda item, we're on Agenda Item 15, we need to be on Agenda Item 14. Those are all motions that you make, they're not debatable, you get them clarified, you stop to get where the procedure is, so that's so you can figure out how you're going to do your business. They're not intended to shut down your motion, they're not intended to necessarily limit debate, they're just to be able to get the proceedings of the board forward.
Kami, I hate to interrupt you, but Ms. Holtz had a question, she said, "Are secondary motions the same as offering an amendment?"
Yes, and that, one of the categories of secondary motions would be an amendment, and so if you just hold on, Mrs. Holtz, I'll get you right there. Is that Mrs. Holtz or Mrs. Hughes?
Holtz.
Mrs. Holtz, okay. Hold on, we're going to move you there.
Thank you.
Okay. Incidental motions, they deal with questions of procedure, rising... ...but not necessarily affecting the business at hand. They're not, they don't come up too often, but they're not debatable, but they do require a second. Simply procedural order, point of order, you hear that periodically. When a point of order is up, you do not need a second. Madam Chair, what, where are we in the motion? Madam Chair, I think it's time for recess. Those are points of order, or important rule, that Madam Chair...
Kami, I'm sorry, can you use that mic? We were getting more texts.
Sorry. So parliamentary procedure, Madam Chair, I want to make a point of order, I want to question whether we had enough votes on this matter. Madam Chair, I think the bylaw requires two-thirds vote, those are points of order, you don't necessarily have to have a second for those, you do have to deal with the question right away, you're asking for information. Mrs. Franklin, I heard you just say that about the meeting, are you talking about the school agenda, or are you talking about city council agenda? That's a clarification, doesn't require a second, but you do get to ask that question ahead of time. Or can we divide the question out? Back to my french fries and milk served at lunch example, can we divide this question? I just want to vote on french fries. That's an incidental motion, doesn't necessarily go to the topic you're dealing with, just deals with clarifying something. And this is what you're normally looking at, is what we call a subsidiary motion, it is a tool that helps the school board dispose of a main motion. This is the one you see most often. There's a concept, and I'll go through some of these a little bit more detail. Lay on the table, that means we want to stop it temporarily. Previous question, in your lingo and your rules, you say, "Call the question," means I want to go back to the main question, I want to get to, back to the vote, or I want to stop debate. You want to limit or extend the debate, I want the debate to stop right now on there, or I want the debate to stop at 10 o'clock so we don't go any further, or I know we agreed it was 10 o'clock, but now I want to go to 11 o'clock, that's what that motion is. You can also postpone to a certain time, I'd like to, it's 2:00 in the morning, I would like to come back tomorrow at 5:00, that's a postpone to a certain time. Or, you know, after talking about this, I think this needs to go back to the Policy Review Committee to look at it, that's a refer to committee. And then amend, you want to amend the motion itself, I don't agree with the motion, I actually want to offer an amendment, that is considered a subsidiary motion. Or you could postpone indefinitely. This will generally kill a motion if it is not taken up the final day, so this is one way you would kill a motion. So for most of the things that you're dealing with, you're limiting or extending debate, it's not a debatable motion, but you can amend the time. So let's say you want to limit the time to 10 o'clock, you can amend that, maybe say, "Can we amend it to 10:30?" That's acceptable amendment, otherwise, you just have to vote on it, it requires a two-thirds vote. Because you're limiting the ability of the members of the board to talk about a subject, this is considered a very serious motion, and it's required two-thirds of your board present to be able to make that motion. Again, if no rules are adopted, generally the rule is that speakers tend to talk two times on an issue, or only 10, and 10 minutes for each time. You can set your own conditions, you could also start a meeting and say, "We're going to, for this particular debate, this is how long you're going to talk, we might only speak on this once," those are also conditions you can place in here. You can close the debate, call the question, previous question, they almost always mean the same exact thing. Again, it's not debatable, it does require a second, so if Mrs. Melick's calling the question, and wants the previous question brought up, she gets a second, then you vote on that. And all you're doing at that point is you are voting to stop the debate, you have not voted on the main motion, you will need to go back to whatever motion's on the floor, you've just stopped debate on there, and it moves back. And it should not be used, generally it should not be used, the debate has not started. So if Mrs. Rye brings up a motion, open debate, and the first person up says, "I want to call the question," that's not appropriate. The purpose of closed debate, call the questions, if the matter's getting tedious, it's been gone over too many times, you're going to use this procedure to shut down the debate and get to the question. You hear this pretty often, not everybody knows how to use this particular procedure, it's called lay on the table, it's not debatable, and it's not amendable. What it means is that temporarily, you're going to set aside the main motion, and if there are any moments, any subsidiary motions, you're going to limit those particular motions. And we've seen this a couple of times, we have 10 items on the agenda, we're still on our first item, but we know we need to get to those, and we're not done with our main item. You could say, "I want to lay on the table temporarily, and I want to pick up the rest of the agenda that we had, finish that, and come back to that matter." That is appropriate use of lay on the table. So let's pick up the other matters on the agenda and come back, you could lay it on the table at that time, but you have to be able to say why. Because it's 10 o'clock at night, and we have 10 more items on the agenda, and we're not going to get to them, and they're important, so that's the reason. You're supposed to tell people why it is urgent for you to stop it temporarily. It needs to be taken off the table a later date, so once it's on the table, it doesn't automatically go back to the next agenda, somebody has to pick it up with the later agenda. But if you want to get to this, and this happened the other night, where we were looking at our agenda items, and we had a lot of agenda items, but we had 100 speakers, we at some point decided we needed to get some of the business done. That is a lay on the table, you could also amend your agenda, in your case, you amended your agenda, but you could lay things on the table if it was progressing through your meeting, so that's just a way to use that procedure. Limiting debate, postpone indefinitely, this basically kills a motion. If you postpone it indefinitely, you're probably not picking it up again, if it doesn't come up at the next meeting, it's going to be over, that will kill the motion. Amending it, we talked about amendments, we'll talk about them a little bit more, this is debatable, you can always challenge an amendment, you can have the multiple levels of amendments, you can decide that. The other thing is, as I mentioned before, refer to committee, that happens periodically, you don't tend to make a normal motion for this, but you could certainly make a motion and send it back to a committee. And postpone to a certain time, mentioned that before, okay, we're going to put this off until 10 o'clock, we're going to do the rest of our business done, and then we're going to pick it back up again, that's where you would use that motion. How do you bring something back before a school board, after it's been voted on? You could take from the table. Remember what I mentioned before, that you can lay it on the table, last meeting, you laid it on the table. If you come back at another meeting, you say, "I want to take it from the table," put that back on. It is non-debatable, you're just voting as to whether you want to bring it back or not. In most cases, if you do not bring it back by the next meeting, if you laid something on the table tonight, and you did not bring it back for the next meeting, the regular scheduled meeting, it will be dead, and it will be over, and you will require a new motion to bring that back. You could do a reconsider vote, most of you know this one, reconsider vote is debatable, you use it when you've just voted on it. The trick to this one is it has to be somebody in the majority who voted on that who will bring it back, because they want to change their vote, something has come to their attention. A lot of times, you see this in, wait a minute, I voted yes, I didn't mean that, I want to reconsider that vote, I want to vote no, now that I think about it. Or a later date, you can come back, and you could say, "I want to reconsider the vote," but you have to be in the majority, the minority cannot bring this back. And again, you cannot, you cannot reconsider a vote if whatever you voted on has gone underway, let's say you entered into a contract, they started building a school, it would not appropriate, not be appropriate for you to come back and reconsider that vote because there are actions that have been taken. And continuing on, in most cases, what you also want is you want to rescind a prior vote. You were not in the majority, you were in the minority, but you don't like what happened two months ago, and you want to change it, then you could move to rescind that vote, it returns the matter to the public body to discuss, it is, requires a two-thirds vote if there has been no previous motion. So if you just spontaneously start, bring it up at a school board, meaning it's going to require two-thirds of your board to do that. If you put it on the agenda, there was notice to people, it just requires a simple majority. And amend something previously adopted, this is almost the same thing as rescind, "I don't like what we voted on last week, so I want to change it in some manner," you're not getting rid of it totally, you just want to change something, you can use this procedure. Again, it's used to change a vote from a prior meeting, it requires a two-thirds vote, if no previous notice has gone out. And those are not all the motions, these are just simple motions that are pretty common. Just a list here.
Mrs. Lanetti, can I just ask, is the two-thirds vote to just approve the revote, or two-thirds vote would be required to override a previous vote?
What it does is it returns it to the floor, so I want to rescind, I want to rescind it.[1683.71] I was in the minority. I didn't like what we voted on November. I'm bringing it back again. You now have to commence two-thirds of this board that it is inappropriate to bring it back. If you don't, if you only get a third of the vote on that, it does not come back. And when you bring it back, it is so the matter was back on the floor originally.
And then it would be treated as a simple majority vote if there was a re-vote?
Right. You're basically reopening the discussion. In most cases, because if time has gone by, you're actually amending it or tweaking it, it's probably going to look more like amend something that was previously adopted. But it just depends on how you bring it. So there are ways, if you disagree, there are ways to bring it back, and that's why I mentioned some of these motions. You just have to know the procedures.
That's what I'm just getting right now.
So two-thirds vote is seven and a half?
It is.
There's actually a chart for that on there. Now, in some of your bylaws and procedures, you have to find it out. If you have less than the full board, it's half of the people present plus one, and you round up on there. And it's confusing. There are actually charts that will show you, depending on the amount of people here. But a couple of your procedures where, in your bylaws, where it's important to understand what you mean by two-thirds. We have defined it as half of the people present plus one person.
And round it up, you're saying? Because it comes out as a fraction.
Yeah, that was something we noticed, which is an ongoing problem. So we made that definition in certain bylaws. Other ones, we have not defined it out yet, because we have not looked at those bylaws. Right. So what, my purpose in explaining these to you is, one, you shouldn't get upset when people are bringing motions. It is legitimate for a body to do it, but understand why you're bringing the motion and what you're using it for. And if your colleagues understand why you're doing it, it helps everybody understand. The idea is to orderly move your business along, so you can actually get things done. I've also seen people where you're frustrated. It's, you know, 12 o'clock at night. How do we slow things down? How do we move things to another day? There are ways to do this. So you can talk about it ahead of time with me, or you can work it on yourself. But there are ways to control your business. You control this business. You control motions on there. So learn some of these procedures, and it will help you get through it. Also, sometimes a few colleagues are getting upset at each other with not understanding why somebody's making a motion on there. If you understand the purpose of the motion, sometimes you don't take it as personally. So I think these are things we need to talk about a little bit more, or at least consider when somebody's bringing it up. This is just a list of debatable, undebatable. I'm not going to go through this.
Ms. Anderson has her hand raised? Yes, Mrs. Anderson.
So I think we need to clarify right here and right now. We've talked about this several times, and Ms. Rye, you raised the point of, is it seven and a third? Is it eight? You know? We've talked about this several times, and then we decided that it's that two-thirds of the board. I believe, Ms. Lynetti, we decided that it would be seven if everyone is present. When everyone is not present, then we have to go by a majority of the board and one more. Is that correct?
On certain bylaws, or it's specifically stated two-thirds. You actually wrote that in. You have, do not, you have not adopted that as an overall rule for what you mean by two-thirds. So that's something you could do. Policy review could look at that. Or you could make a decision overall as a board that you mean that on there. I do know in some of them that we've already looked at in the last year and a half. We amended at least two bylaws to specifically put that in there, because it had been an issue at prior meetings. We do not have an overall rule that that's how you're going to calculate two-thirds, though.
So I, since we've already had two colleagues ask, it does seem like this merits more attention in another time and place, because with 11 members, one-half present, I think in both Mrs. Anderson and Mrs. Franklin, we're getting at this. One-half of 11 is five and a half. Am I good so far? Plus, plus one is six and a half, and then we round that up to seven. So that's how we arrive at the seven that Mrs. Anderson referred to, correct?
Correct.
So if you're telling us that we need to streamline or align all our documents with that, I think we do want consistency, or if we want to revisit it, but it seems so.
I agree. I think that spelling this out and making it as part of our policy or part of our bylaws would be, we wouldn't have to ever question it again. We need to state that we consider seven as being two-thirds, et cetera, whenever. I can take that back to Paul.
Out of bylaw specifically in there. As I said, I do know it's in two of the bylaws where it's important to get the two-thirds vote. The other choice is, and you will see this sometimes, is there's actual lists that people adopt. 11 people member, this, 11 people present, there are, this is a majority, this is a two-thirds majority. And you could divide a list like that. But I think that may be better for policy review to look at which way is better. I know we picked the half plus one on another bylaw that we were working on. Okay. So now I want to discuss some of the common issues that, as I mentioned this before, some of the things that I see periodically, some of the things that school board members say to me, and I keep a list of some of these things. Addressing school board members and staff by their first name during meetings. I don't know if you all want to address that. I've seen that be an issue. I've seen the public comment on it. They feel it's disrespectful. So I don't know if that's something you want to just talk about yourself. And again, got to get in the habit. You got to correct yourself. I've done it here twice. I think I've referred to people by their first name. But using either a title or your, your, your Mr. or Mrs. title, because I'm being Mrs. and Mrs. right now. Do you feel strongly about that issue, or you want a common agreement that you will use titles?
Yeah. Yes, it's, I think it, I would like to see the full board have that as a goal, or as a protocol.
One of the things I see in a couple of comments, I actually get a fair amount of comments from the public about this, is people calling out comments out of order. I know your vice chair, whoever's serving as vice chair, is generally keeping a list of who's next in order. But I'm seeing a lot more people yelling out comments. I've actually had a couple of situations where a couple of people are talking or yelling out, and they're turning to me to ask a question, but we've got somebody else yelling across somebody else. And it makes it very difficult to know what the motion is, where we are, what the question on the floor is. I understand people get excited on there, but part of the problem is, it's hard for everybody in the room. And if, in our current setup, we're spread around the room, we can't all look at each other at one time. It's very difficult. It's also difficult for people participating electronically. So do you want to have a discussion about calling out comments, or disagreement that you will not call out a comment? You'll raise your hand, or get the attention of the chair or the vice chair to speak? Mrs. Franklin?
I think that probably, especially, I know when we are zooming in, it's really difficult to understand where the order is, because you can't really see the dais, and you can't see the person speaking. So I don't know if there's a way to be more clear about who is in order, how to get yourself in line, that type of thing. I think that would be helpful.
I think even though there's a delay, perhaps the vice chair should zoom in so that they're able to see the hand raising part, because it was easier for me to do the hand raising thing from home with, you know, with that, being able to do that. So I will make sure I bring my computer and monitor that, too, because it's rather difficult for our clerk to have to do what she's doing and monitor that all the time.
It's just a question of when to break, that I don't want to interrupt any member of the school board to let you know.
Right. And I understand that, too. So I'll make sure I have my computer then and zoom. But like I said, there is a delay, but I'm, you know, I'll keep up with that.
So you're in effect saying, translate what we do when we're all participating via Zoom to continuing that. You're all with that and continuing that role here.
The vice chair will take responsibility for the order of speakers.
Yes. And it's easy when we all zoom. When I did it from home, it was, it was very easy. But it's difficult when, when I don't have the Zoom feature here when I'm present, but.
And it goes back to the earlier discussions on orderly getting done a business, everybody having an opportunity to contribute. If you jump ahead and you're not next in line, you're not allowing everybody to have their first or second spoke. The other thing, it goes back to what I was mentioning before about the cross-conversations. Because Mrs. Franklin commented on something right after Mrs. Riggs spoke, doesn't mean that Mrs. Riggs then turns around and gets to comment back to Mrs. Franklin. It is not a discussion between board members. It is a discussion with the whole board. And again, if you're addressing the issue or talking to the chair, it's easy to understand. But you don't automatically get a right to jump in. The next person who was waiting has a right to speak. And you should, if you want to speak again, you just get back in line. But you don't automatically get a right to address somebody's comments, just because they disagreed with you or you were the prior speaker. So I think this would probably go back to your vice chair will make the determination of order and let you get back in line for that. But again, the yelling out and the side conversations are a little bit of a problem for us. Side conversations are another one I've seen during them. When people are talking, it can be very difficult in the room, because sometimes your microphones are picking up. And this is something I've had school board members come to me, can you ask them to stop talking? They're talking up there, and it's overriding the debate on the floor. One is disrespectful to the speaker. Two, it's hard for everybody else in the room to do. So, you know, just a self-monitoring. The side conversations need to be minimized, so they're not disrupting what's going on the floor. It's also disrespectful for individuals that are trying to get comments through. I'm going to throw this one out there. This has been brought up to me multiple times in the last six months, and I think it's a comment for society right now, is the use of communication during, communication devices during meetings. It's very obvious. I get the public contacting me actually during meetings sometimes and saying, are they paying any attention? They're on their device the whole time. I have seen people taking pictures and posting in the room. Your own rules, and I think Carolyn used to read them at the beginning, is that you're not supposed to be using your communication devices during a meeting. And I've seen people take pictures and they're posting while the meeting is going on, and that's becoming an issue. What I'm also seeing is that people are on their devices, and then a question was just answered or put up there. They've lost track, because they're too busy on their devices. This is your issue to deal with. I'm just pointing out to you what I am seeing on here. I will also point out to you a concern that I've had repeatedly, that what you're doing, if you're communicating electronically in some method, you are in your capacity as a school board member. Now, I don't really care if you told your kid he needs to brush his teeth before he goes to bed. That is not going to be a school board member if you did that during a school board matter during the meeting. But if you're saying, what do you think about this amendment? You know, can we move on about it? Those issues are, again, back to documents or communications that are created during your capacity as a school board member. They can be FOIAed. We don't currently, this time in Virginia, have the concept of an electronic meeting among three or four school board members, but that is changing very quickly. If three or four of you are participating in a chat of some sort, if you are participating in a text message group on it, you could potentially put us in a situation where you were holding a meeting that was not compliant with FOIA. You're having a meeting within a meeting, and that's a problem for me. It can be FOIAed. The documents can be FOIAed. They could text it and see what you're doing. They could also question, did you give notice? Was there an agenda? Was it open to the public? Those are areas of concern. Now, this is a developing area of the law for us in Virginia. We have not accepted the concept of electronic meetings, but clearly, we're doing so many electronic meetings that that may change. So that's something I'd like you to talk about, talk about yourselves, about your use of communication devices. I'm not sure we're getting away from it in this day and age, because we're doing that. But I see a lot of things going on that people are monitoring. I know the public's aware of it. I know multiple school board members have come to me and said, what can we do about this? This is your rule to do it. I've told you what my concern is under FOIA issues, that you're properly holding a meeting, you're not creating documents that I can't get access to later on for a FOIA request. But I think you need to talk about yourselves about how you're going to deal with these communication devices during the meetings.
And if I may weigh in as chair, the issue really has developed during the pandemic. So I understand that it is, it's connected with, with just the, you know, the, the nature of every meeting, where it's a front and center issue, and anxieties are high, and concerns are high, and strong opinions exist. But having said that, it really has gotten to the point, and that's why I asked that this be a retreat item. And we're not talking about banning cell phones for school board members, but we really do have to personally assess. We just think, be honest with yourselves. What percent of the meeting time are you spending on your phone versus being engaged, not only in our, in our discussion and staff presentations, but speakers? They, we owe them our full attention, too. And we owe our colleagues our full attention. We owe the staff members their, our full attention for the time they put into these presentations. And I think, you know, so perhaps we've missed some, and we're all maybe to some extent have played a role in this, have misled the public a little bit. The meeting time is not the time for public input. I mean, they can send a public input whenever, but there is, there should be no expectation that they get a response during a meeting. This is what we're elected to do. We meet every two weeks, sometimes more often. But the, we have to give our full attention and our full, to our meetings. And I'm just asking my colleagues to personally weigh this in our commitment to being fully engaged in these meetings. And we just felt, you know, this touch base reminder, I think I trust you all enough that we can all go forward with that commitment in mind and use discretion. That's what I'm asking as the chair. Okay. Anybody else care before we proceed? Mrs. Franklin?
I just wanted to say, I apologize. I actually take pictures of the presentation sometimes, because sometimes it's very small in the packets that we get. So I just want the public to know that I'm taking pictures, so I can expand and actually look at some of the numbers that are presented, because some, again, the packets that we get are sometimes quite small. But I just want to make sure.
There have been times that I've noticed you doing that, and I've had them go get you a package early on, so. But there are times when it's obvious that people are flogging, and that what we're seeing is comments in the public. Again, that's not my concern. My concern is a FOIA request, but I think that's something you need to be aware that this is becoming a broader issue. Any more discussion on that topic?
Okay, please proceed. And we're going to plan, by the way, on a 2:30. We're going to, we'll skip another break, because we'll have a break scheduled before the 4 o'clock workshop. So at 2:30, we'll go with our strategic plan and Dr. Baneki and Dr. Spence on that.
The next two sections go basically together, is when individuals fail to read their agenda item materials, and then you have to repeat back to them, or they're not aware of what's going on, you know, and then you're backing staff. Staff is assuming that you've read the materials. Now, again, the burden also falls on staff. And again, I'll be the first one to tell you, I put your power board out for you this morning. But you need to read those materials ahead of time, because if an individual has to repeat it to you, you're losing a lot of time. In a normal meeting, that's not that bad, but when you're here for 10, 12 hours, having to repeat for somebody what was in that policy, because they didn't look at it, can be a little distracting to people. So again, planning time for agenda materials and understanding what's in there coming up. The second one is very similar, not planning to attend an entire school board meeting. I've seen this a number of people. Well, I didn't know we had a closed session. I didn't know we had these many topics on. I planned something else. Again, your agenda comes out, and we've just adopted, I believe, policy one, bylaw 139, which talks about the agenda planning process and what you do if you want to challenge it. The general procedure is roughly Wednesday before a regular meeting, you're going to get the draft agenda, so you have some idea what's going to be on it. If you object to it, or saying, I won't be here, or I won't be able to make that closed session, because I have to be somewhere, that's the time when you need to say that. Or when the agenda planning committee, again, that's something you're just adopting tonight on 128, is the addition that formally creating the agenda planning committees. You need to tell the people who are meeting usually the same day or right before the regular meeting, this is going to be a problem. Please don't plan anything. I can't be there this day. Let them know. But that's coming upon you to let them know that you have a conflict. Closed session matters. Sometimes we know ahead of time what they're going to be. A lot of times, they come up in a short time period that we have to move quickly. Litigation matters are like that. Employment matters. There's a set time period in which we have to get it up. So at the last meeting agenda planning, I may not have known that that matter needed to come up. You need to check on that, because that will be something we have to vote on. Also, with close, if we have time, we fit them in before the regular meeting, but a lot of times, it has to go after the meeting. So you need to be aware of what's on your agenda and planning for that, because I know that's a frustration level. You don't have the ability to discipline each other for not coming. But it could affect a matter if not, there are not a sufficient amount of people there present. There are also very important things you do have to do, and it's important the entire board be there to get the input. So I don't know if you want to discuss those issues, but those are two issues that have been brought to my attention the last couple of months by various school board members.
I think we're good.
This is a bigger, we talked about public comments on meetings on there. I'm not going to go into great detail, but for those of you who've been around for a while, you know that public comments are always a tricky area. The public does not automatically have a right to speak to you at a school board meeting on there. The meetings are public meetings in the sense that the public can come observe, but not necessarily means for the public. So it was never automatically a right for the public to speak to you, except in certain areas that require public hearings. The budget requires selling property. There's certain, when you change districts, they require public notice and public hearings. But normally, you didn't have it, except this year, as of July 1, the General Assembly put a law through that said, at least one quarter of all your regular meetings during the year have to allow for public comment. It doesn't say agenda items or non-agenda items. It just says public comment. Because you have both public comment for agenda, non-agenda items on almost every one of your regular meetings, this isn't an issue for you. But that's the first time it actually required that people have the ability to come in and speak to you on issues. Understand what happens when you open up the floor. The meetings are not traditionally a, what we call an open forum. There's a large body of law, Mrs. Hughes, I'm sure, would be familiar with it, having to do what we call forums, places that you've opened up. Parks are traditionally open forums for the people to speak. Streets are traditionally for places where the public can speak. The public does not automatically have a right to walk into the superintendent's office and say whatever they want. That is not an open forum. There's a myth category where you open up an area in which case you've allowed the public to come in. And that's what you're not, your agenda item speakers and your non-agenda item speakers are. It's not normally open. You've allowed the opportunity for individuals to come in. Once you've done that, you are subject to the First Amendment of the Constitution, which allows for free speech and free assembly issues. You are limited as a government body to controlling for time, place, or manner. You can say, you can't speak before 8 o'clock. You can only speak three minutes as a time issue. You can only speak at the podium on there. You can only speak on certain types of issues. What you can't talk about is the content of that, because you're a government body. You can't limit people's content that is generally what they talk to. So they want to come in, they want to talk to you about school reopening. They're allowed to talk to you about it, even if you don't want to hear it, you're not voting on it that day, if they want to speak to it. But you can't say, I disagree with somebody's point of view, so I'm cutting them off. You can limit certain things that are very disruptive, vulgar, obscene. Or if you limit it for a certain purpose, we're only here to talk about the budget being proposed by the superintendent, and you want to talk about grading, that's not appropriate for that. So I know there was a speaker earlier that talked about mentioning what you can do. You have very limited areas. Once you've opened up, you have to define ahead of time what they can speak on, but you can't control the content and shut them down. So that's a tricky area, and I warn you, be very careful about that. Other than that, your bylaw 147, your rules on speakers are sign up by noon of the day of the meeting. You've added four-minute speaking, and you can only speak once during a meeting. And I'm not sure, but it's clear that if you want to come and speak on non-agenda items, your bylaw says you can't, then come speak on agenda items. You're limited to one. You're limited to once during a meeting to speak to that. So discussion points are, that's come up a couple of times. The orders of speaker when agenda items need to be handled. We've had that come up a couple of times. You have 100 speakers, but you have 10 items on your agenda and non-agenda item, people wouldn't be able to come in until midnight. You may want to talk about how you want to handle your speakers. Limitations on speakers, we talked about cutting the time periods back. Do you want to cut the four minutes? Or for a certain meeting, do you want to cut the time period down to three minutes because you have 100 speakers? And then continue electronic speakers after pandemic restrictions have lifted. You're currently allowing public speakers to come in because there is not another way for them to often get in here for health reasons. Those restrictions may very well be lifted when the General Assembly's budget or amendment goes. If they don't make a change in the General Assembly, which means you may not be doing electronic meetings, they could come in here. You probably need to have a discussion. Do you like this method? Do you want to continue doing, allowing speakers to do that? Do you want to change the order? Right now, technically, your order for speakers is how they sign up. A lot of times, you've made the decision recently to allow people who are in person to go first over electronic people. That's not technically a bylaw, so it's just been a rule you've addressed. I know a number of school board members have talked about what they think is fair and unfair. So I'm just opening it up to you now, it would be a good time to talk about your agendas, people. I think this might be where Mrs. Owens' question came in about broadcasting non-agenda people. You can probably bring that, non-agenda speakers, you can bring that in at this time period too.
Go ahead, Mrs. Franklin.
I would like to just speak on the order of speakers when agenda items need to be handled. Just as a point of context, you know, we all do our best to prepare for these meetings. And I think just in honor of that and respectful of the staff members that put these agendas together, I would like to propose that we get our business portion completed. And then, you know, unless of course the speakers are going to weigh in on a vote, but I do think that we should probably get some of the necessary business items completed before, for example, if we have a vote on coming back to school, of course, that we want the speakers to be able to weigh in on that. But if it's, and I'm still learning the non-agenda versus agenda items and that sort of thing. But I do think that if it's someone speaking on an agenda item and we're placing a vote, we certainly want to have their discussion before the vote. But otherwise, I do believe that we should make sure that if there is necessary business to be conducted, that that is made a priority as well. But again, I'm still new, so that's just my two cents.
And I will point out, you used to have a bylaw that said you would take agenda item speakers till 7:30. You would stop, you would pick up the rest of your business. And when you completed that business, you would return to your speakers. The concern was if you needed to hear them before an item you were voting on. What you can do is delay that to further action items on there, but you used to have that procedure in this, you got the business done. It was, I think, this fall that they made a decision not to do that. So that is one way to handle it. And as we mentioned, there are a couple of motions you can do, but I don't know if other school board members want to talk about that issue.
Madam Chair, you have Ms. Owens in the queue.
Okay, Ms. Owens.
Thank you. I agree with Ms. Franklin that it would be nice to have a system where we move business to the front that is not open for discussion or that we don't have any people signed up to discuss. If we have textbook approvals or some other kind of, you know, consent agenda matters that the speakers who have signed up have not listed that as a topic, being able to get those matters done in advance of our speakers to be respectful of the staff members who have presentation or information session, that kind of thing, getting them through, I would be in favor of arranging our agenda as such. Like I mentioned earlier today, I would like to see all of the comments and information. It's all information, all of the information that is presented to the board being available to the public. There's the two pieces, like Kami said, I want to see it happen certainly during a pandemic when the public doesn't even have the option to be present to hear the information. And hopefully, if we've recorded any of the back sessions since the pandemic, those speakers can be added to our links if we have those recordings. But certainly from today and moving forward during the pandemic, I think it's important to have that transparency. And then I would like to see for even after the pandemic timeframe, that those continue to be broadcast, recorded, and posted. I think that as a board, we could have the accountability piece for, you know, if somebody's coming up to speak on their business and it's not a board-related topic, that, you know, we try and cut that off or limit, like Kami said in the beginning, the things that can be discussed to only board-specific topics. So those are my two pieces on that. I think when we have nights that run really long, which we've had a lot of since I've been on the board, but maybe not so much prior to that, I think that we could probably look at some creative solutions. I don't know if there's a way that we could have our non-agenda speakers have a three-minute or whatever our timeframe is, space where they're able to just record their comments and then we see them and play them at the end on a little Zoom continuum or whatever kind of technology we can arrange for that. Because we do sometimes have, well, for anybody, for our staff, for our students who are trying to stay up till midnight so they can have their voices heard, I think we have the technology to be more creative in how we're accommodating, so.
Thank you. And Dr. Spence is on the Q.
That we do presently, with regard to the first point, that we do presently have the flexibility of rearranging the agenda. We, in fact, the last meeting is an example. I mean, it did require a two-thirds vote. But in that case, it started with just pushing upfront the business of the day and then it was further determined, well, actually, these can be postponed till the following meeting, which is today. So, but I, you know, so we can continue to, we really just need to assess that when we see the speaker volume, that's, and which is, so that's why it's kind of a last minute thing because speakers can sign up until noon, but you get some idea by Monday. And so, you know, we'll continue to weigh that. And Dr. Spence?
Yes, ma'am, thanks. I just wanted to address, so the question about whether or not folks who were speaking on non-agenda, other people were able to see them during these board meetings just as if they were sitting here. So if they're participating by Zoom, they have been able to see those. It has not been broadcast on VBTV, which has been the norm, but they have been still on Zoom. And so anybody attending via Zoom as a member of the public has been able to see the non-agenda speakers. So I did want to clear that up. And my ask with the notion of perhaps on a regular basis attending to who is speaking and how many and whether or not we should then move different business around on the agenda is that we not make that sort of embedded into our protocols conversation? Because that is very difficult on staff. I'll speak on behalf of the clerk, who I know probably wouldn't speak for herself, but to, on that day, try to be able to curate for you the thematic issues of speaking and then whether or not she thinks, you know, she'd have to then come and say, here's the themes, and then you all would have to take this up at the start of every meeting. And as a reminder, when we do postpone items that are on there or move them around, you know, staff is prepared for things in a certain order and that order follows your bylaws. And so we would, we would just, I think I would say on behalf of staff, we would not be comfortable if it was a regular protocol to try to assess the number of speakers and then adjust the agenda. We understand, last week was an extraordinary week. There was more speakers than I've ever been here in my seven years and there was probably a need to do that. And it was a kind gesture, frankly, because I think you did it for our staff so that they didn't have to be conducting their part of the agenda, you know, one o'clock, two o'clock in the morning. And I appreciate that, but I just don't want that to be kind of a normative protocol. That's my recommendation to you all, speaking on behalf of staff.
Mrs. Melnick?
Mrs. Lanetti, if you would just go back to what you mentioned before, that we provide the, when it comes to non-agenda speakers, so, and whether or not they're on camera, we're doing, we're doing the work of the public. This is not the public's meeting. And so when we provide an agenda for the public, they know exactly what we're going to talk about and that is what deserves to be on camera. But, and of course, when we're talking about this, we're not talking about pandemic times. We're talking about normal, regular operation times. And people can, people can come here and see it all, but to give a platform for non-agenda items, which is not what was business at hand, I've always felt was not necessary. Come and speak to us, we're going to listen. If you think there might be public speakers that you want to listen to that might want to speak on non-agenda items, you're welcome to come. But to broadcast that on VBTV is not necessary. And as you mentioned, that it could be someone's business that they're promoting or coupons that they've handed out to, you know, whatever. But I think we do everything pretty well. And we are very transparent and open to the public. And I think that since we've been in this Zoom feature, that we're doing an exceptional job. And if you're wondering if we are or not, look at the ratings. Like people call this must-see TV. And we are incredibly transparent and we have a lot of viewers. And we should technically be proud of that.
Madam Chair, you're a little over right now. There are a couple of other topics which you can put off to another time period. I would suggest we, the strategic plan is very important. I'm sure you should get to that. One thing, I'm in your package, and I think we talked about it. I have given you a draft of how to write an amendment. This was obviously an issue the other day. I'd like you to look at that and come up with a form that you, if you're going to make amendments during meetings, that we start writing them out so we all know what we're voting on. I spent a lot of time reviewing meeting minutes to verify what you voted on last time. So this is just a talking point. It doesn't have to be this form, but something like this would help us all during meetings so we know exactly what you voted on and everybody could see it. So look at this and suggest it. After that, I think I'm just going to stop what we're doing at this point and turn it back over to you, Madam Chair, for your next speaker.
This is excellent.
That's a good point to end it at today because I think every one of us who woke up the next morning, you know, realized that we don't need to be rocket scientists, that this, which has often been done to make it a standard expectation with amendments, to have them in writing. So we will determine next steps on outside of this meeting, on these matters. But thank you for your prep. And these, and again, overall, I just want to say thank you, colleagues, because we've been challenged with meetings ever since the pandemic began. And overall, I just want to applaud you all. I think we're all doing the best we can. And this is, this is just a time and place, a retreat for us to stop and assess and say, how can we do it better? But I am very proud of the commitment that everybody comes to the meetings with. And just thank you for taking the time today to consider some of these things, where, you know, some areas for improvement. So with that, Dr. Spence, are we ready to proceed with you and Dr. Banacki?
Yes, ma'am. I'm not going to provide much preamble. As the board knows, whenever we have a retreat, we like to, if we're able, spend a little bit of time talking with you about where we are with our strategic plan and what's going on with that. As you know, this is a bit of a different year in terms of how we've been able to roll that out. And Dr. Banacki is going to talk about that and how we concluded with our work with Compass to 2020 and then update you a little bit on how we're thinking about managing the strategic planning process moving forward. So with that, Dr. Banacki?
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chairwoman Melnick, members of the school board, and Dr. Spence. My name's Dr. Lisa Banacki and I'm the Executive Director for Planning Innovation and Accountability, also your part-time facilitator. I'm here to provide an update on the division's work related to our strategic framework, Compass to 2025, and introduce a new method of managing the change required to implement our framework. The last time I addressed the school board was July of 2020. And at that time, we looked back at our accomplishments under Compass to 2020, our prior strategic framework, and reviewed the goals and equity emphases of our new framework. We also examined the global indicators we'd be using to track our progress or what we refer to as navigational markers, and shared the Compass to 2025 strategic action agenda for the 2020-2021 school year. As a reminder, the strategic action agenda identifies priorities for schools for the upcoming year aligned to the goals in the strategic framework. What we didn't have in July was the final installment of our Compass to 2020 storyboards, currently temporarily on display here, soon to be in the back of the room, soon to be installed in our hallway. I had the privilege of sharing this final storyboard with our building administrators at the first citywide meeting this past fall. And we reflected on how far we'd come since 2015, noting how our core values, adopted at the start of the last framework, have played such a critical role in our response during the pandemic. No one could have anticipated the core value of innovation and its behavioral imperative of being open to change would be so thoroughly tested over the past year. We also reflected on the groundwork laid by digital anchor schools and how it shaped our understanding of what transformation requires and noted that the investment in one-to-one digital learning put us in a better position than most school divisions to transition to remote learning as needed. Across the various storyboards, we also see an ongoing and increasing commitment to social, emotional learning that has dominated in recent months as a critical need among students and staff. And while COVID-19 is featured prominently in our final storyboard and is something we are still navigating, what shouldn't be missed is the hope and promise of a new day represented by the individuals in the foreground holding a map to the future, the future as articulated in Compass to 2025. And as promising as that future hope is, it doesn't change the fact that one of our challenges has been being responsive in the present while preparing for the future. In the remainder of our time together, I'd like to share some of the progress we've been able to make under our new strategic framework. And I also plan to introduce how we plan to manage the change necessary to accomplish the goals in Compass to 2025. We laid some of the groundwork for implementing the new strategic framework last year prior to COVID-19. In December of 2019, following the formal adoption of the new framework, central support administrators and senior leadership were convened to review the strategies in Compass to 2025 and grouped them into sets of related strategies. We also identified key roles for implementing and monitoring the strategic framework, including strategy leads, primarily central office directors and executive directors, responsible for leading teams, responsible for operationalizing and implementing assigned strategies, identifying needed resources, synthesizing team decisions and/or dilemmas, and sharing progress updates. In addition, each team has a manager associated with it and the managers are chief officers responsible for providing direction and guidance as needed and monitoring alignment and progress of strategy teams. The management model continues to include a group we have historically referred to as Compass Collaborative. The Compass Collaborative is composed of the strategy managers or chief officers and building principals representing each of the school levels. The Compass Collaborative plays an invaluable role in providing feedback and helping to monitor implementation from the school-level perspective. Now, throughout the early spring and into the summer, recovery planning dominated our efforts. But the strategy leads began meeting in July and met over the next several months to identify existing resources to support the goals in the new framework, identify priorities for the current school year, and share progress updates. The identified priorities were reviewed by the strategy managers as well as Compass Collaborative. Now, the slower starts to the rollout of the strategic framework did afford us the opportunity to think deeply about how best to manage the change required under Compass to 2025. Before I share how we plan to manage change moving forward, I feel like I've said that three times, I'm really trying to build the anticipation required under Compass 2025, I'd like to take just a moment to share how we've been meeting the challenge. I referenced just a few moments ago, the challenge of being responsive in the present while preparing for the future. So we've been meeting this challenge by supporting schools throughout the school year as evidenced by the updates the school board receives on the 2020-2021 school year plan at each of your meetings, covering everything from academics, athletics, health mitigations, recruitment and hiring, technology, and finance. It is an all-hands-on-deck approach to providing support with all of the central office departments working as a team. There is also work underway to identify and share innovative practices and bright spots occurring despite and in some cases likely because of the current circumstances. We're also meeting the challenge of providing professional learning opportunities and resources to support social, emotional learning, culturally responsive practices, and trauma-informed practices. The Office of Family and Community Engagement has created a resource guide for families to access local and division resources and have also developed a group called VB Care Connect. This group of mutually supportive partners are working to help with wraparound services, early childhood services, with a focus on finding funding resources and volunteers. The school division is also advancing equity by selecting a vendor to conduct the assessment outlined in our recently adopted educational equity policy, which will serve to address the equity emphases outlined in Compass to 2025. As we move forward in planning, As we move forward in planning, implementing, monitoring, and reporting progress related to our strategic framework, we'll be employing a new process for managing the change required by Compass to 2025. That process involves taking a change portfolio management approach, which means simultaneously coordinating, integrating, managing, prioritizing, and controlling several projects at once at the organization level. To put it more simply, it involves identifying a limited number of priorities or change initiatives, and translating those change initiatives into nuts-and-bolts projects with specific deliverables, timelines, and critical paths articulated. I thought this quote did a pretty good job of capturing the importance of project management, though I think I would say, and I changed this quote and attributed it to myself, "Operations keep the lights on, strategy is the track through the tunnel, but project management is the train engine that moves the organization forward." But why do we think a project approach and managing several projects at once is the way to go? One of the biggest reasons is to make change more manageable by limiting the priorities. If everything is a priority, nothing is a priority. Taking the project approach also requires getting more specific about what will be done by when and provides a clearer indication if you're meeting your intended outcomes. It also helps you maintain an eye on the bigger picture of where you're trying to go and how you're planning to get there. We also see it as a powerful way of showing our community what matters to us and how we are progressing on our priorities, and is useful for driving the development of our Strategic Action Agenda for schools. We began conversations around the concept of a change portfolio back in November by thinking about and responding to the question of, what do we see as the biggest change initiatives we need to be engaging in now to make the most progress on Compass to 2025? And we considered those initiatives in light of the questions that you see reflected on this slide. Based on our deliberations, we identified three. Our big three include equity, integrated tiered systems of support, and high school redesign. In my role as the Executive Director of Planning Innovation and Accountability, I'll be working alongside the leaders of each of these initiatives to translate them into projects and act as a coordinator across them. Our equity initiative will be led by Dr. Parrott. She has already provided you with several updates on the equity assessment we are beginning with Quality Measures LLC. This project has multiple phases, including the initial equity assessment, which involves data and document review, interviews, focus groups, a final report with recommendations. Phase two involves the development of the equity plan based on the equity assessment and a plan for professional learning. And phase three involves putting equity in action by implementing the equity plan. Integrated Tiered Systems of Support involves multiple offices and is led by Mrs. Day and Dr. DiMaggio. This initiative is about integrating our tiered systems of support represented by our Student Response Team Model, or SRT model, and Positive Behavioral Intervention and Supports, PBIS, into one coherent, strategically combined system to address students' academic, social-emotional, behavioral, and attendance needs. A compelling argument for integrating the SRT model and PBIS is that they share foundational principles. Both are focused on prevention and include assessing response to intervention and tiered approach to service delivery. Key deliverables are anticipated to include the identification of universal screeners, particularly for social-emotional needs, a resource map, which is a menu of evidence-based interventions for use by school teams, an improved data platform to support data decision-making and progress monitoring for school teams. The third change initiative is, in our portfolio, is High School Redesign. This work is led by Mr. Delaney and Mrs. Woodhouse. Last year, school divisions were invited to submit applications for the designation of school divisions of innovation. To do so, you had to propose a plan for innovation. And we chose to submit work that our high schools were doing around reimagining what the high school experience could be for students. In our application, we indicated that we wanted to create future-ready students and proposed a redesign of the high school experience to include rigorous, relevant, and real-world learning experiences that emphasize interdisciplinary thinking, application to the world outside of school, and connect to student interests and future-oriented goals. Examples would include cross-curricular course offerings that foster deeper learning, new courses to meet identified student needs, building in work-based experiences. Also includes a student-driven, adult-supported process in which students create and cultivate their own unique and information-based visions for post-secondary success and develop a meaningful plan to accomplish those personalized goals. But it also includes authentic and community-based learning experiences that culminate with a high school signature experience to be completed during high school and that aligns to the Virginia Beach City Public Schools graduate profile, a portfolio assessment and showcase system to expand balanced assessment and to curate learning experiences that illustrate growth and mastery of both curriculum content and demonstrate growth in the graduate profile domains, curriculum and advisory structures to support social-emotional learning, and a resolute focus on ensuring equitable learning opportunities and achievement outcomes for students. Over the next several weeks, I'll continue meeting with the project leads to more formally document the projects, what they entail, timelines. And we'll use this information to develop project summaries to include on vbschools.com as part of a new Compass to 2025 website. As soon as that is available, we'll make that information known to you. We'll also be monitoring progress and providing updates on an ongoing basis, the rhythm of which will become more clear as we scope the projects. And finally, we'll be developing the Strategic Action Agenda for next school year. We typically communicate those out as part of the final citywide meeting of principals, which is April this year. Thank you for your time today and for your support of the division's strategic framework. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Before we open it up to questions, Dr. Spence, do you have any remarks to share?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Comments or questions, Mrs. Melnick?
I, I, amazing. Every time you speak, you're amazing. But I have to tell you, I think what's truly amazing is that over the past 10 months, everything that has been thrown at schools across the world, across our nation, you wouldn't think that you would get this level of continuous work like what you have done. And so a few things stuck out. I mean, I'm just floored by this. I mean, it's, it's, you have, you guys are not skipping a beat while keeping up with, with exactly what we're, what we're going to be hoping for for our high school students with, which is to deepen learning and prepare them to thrive in an unpredictable future. And so you certainly have set the model for that. And if, and if our, if our team can, can do this level of work, I have no doubt that you're going to carry these high schoolers to the next level. And I just want to thank you for the, for the terminology that you used around equity. And that was a resolute focus. And so I think that's really important. And I think that's really important for this community to hear those, those two words in conjunction with equity. So thank you. Thank you.
Mrs. Felton?
Thank you, Chair Rye, I really appreciate that. And Ms. Banacki, I'm just blown away. The next time I have to do a youth leader group presentation, I will call on you to help me with that. I was so intense through the whole thing. I'd just like to say, and just to resonate on some of what Ms. Melnick said as well. The thing, we were just talking about it in the VSBA Federal Conference yesterday, and a lot of the things that you have hit on that they were talking about, and they're getting ready to. And I'm just so amazed that we are doing it. You set the, President, you set the foundation of groundwork. And while I was speaking with one of the, the VSBA leaders, they were saying that, "We are always watching Virginia Beach. We always, because you all always ahead of the curve. And we just sit back and wait and see what you're going to do. And we take those components that you've already put into place, and we use those and move forward." I'd just like to say thank you. I liked that the portion of the equity is really speaking great. We talked a lot about that yesterday at the federal conference for the VSBA that came into play quite frequently. And some of, and I don't know if you're sitting in on it, could not have been, because some of the things that you touched were definitely spoken in that conference. Also, in our annual fall meeting in November, equity was a component of how we were moving forward. And I'm just looking forward to the great things you're going to do with our high school students as well, getting them prepared for career, not just education, but preparing them for life, career things. Thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you, Mrs. Felton.
How about our Zoom participants?
No, ma'am.
So the storyboard, I, I'm not sure if it was decided in advance that if we even knew, or if, if the staff even knew if you would follow through with our recent history with storyboards. But clearly you have.
To finish out Compass to 20, I couldn't leave it on, it was, so there was the question of, this has been a strange year. And typically on the boards, we don't reflect like current events. Like, there are some other current events in the history of the city of Virginia Beach that may not be reflected there. But because of its huge impact on education for us as a school division, and then, and then it was, you know, does it make sense to have a fund? It's like, well, you have to finish it out. So this is finishing out the Compass to 2020 story and being able to see how we've laid the foundation for where we are now.
And, and remind us of the artist?
Rachel Bryan is an artist that we've worked with in the past. She was someone, someone had seen at a conference. Have you ever gone to a conference where they do like live sketch noting? Like, it's really engaging. She had done that at a conference, and we had found out more about her and approached her about, would you be willing to work back and forth with us on this? She's really skilled in terms of, you can provide her, she can run with an idea. You know, like, it's not as though I say, please, well, I do eventually. She'll send the first draft, and I'll say, can you make this, this, and this, this, these little edits? But, you know, being able to work with someone who's really skilled in that area is always great. If I could do anything without failing, I'd be a graphic artist. I just thought I'd share that for everyone to know. I tried, but it's bad. Yeah, it's bad, anyway.
Mrs. Riggs?
So the strategic plan, you know, covers several things.
Yes.
So you've come up with the big three.
I'm up with the big three.
Okay. How did you come up with the big three? What, why did they become the top three priorities of the strategic plan?
By considering those questions that I had on the prior slide. And that was, how much of a, how much farther along do we think these, given a set of particular initiatives? We generated a longer list than three. Of this list, what are the ones that we think will get us the furthest down the road? And from my perspective, also pulls in as many strategies, ties as many strategies together in a meaningful way so they don't feel like they're isolated things? Also, how much of a lift would it be for schools versus is it the work of a single department? So if it was something that was primarily to be done by a single department, it wasn't the big lift that would be one of the change initiatives. So it became part of that list by, what is the, is there an ask for schools in this work that we want to then specify in our Strategic Action Agenda? Is it work we've already started down the road of, and now we need to further it along? Give it a, a window of time to get it to this point? And then the idea of the change portfolio is, as projects are completed, and sometimes I think it's hard, as at school divisions, they say, if something is done. Because obviously, once you've done it, you keep doing it. The idea of the change portfolio is you rotate in projects after you've completed another project. So these are the first three that we brought into our change portfolio. We don't want more than three at any given time as a focus because it's too much, it would be too much to focus on.
Okay. Thank you.
So if I could just add to that, because I don't want there to be an impression that, that those are the top three sort of priorities of the strategic plan. Everything inside the strategic plan has, has meaning and priority and provides direction to the school district. I mean, it is your plan, you've adopted it, it's what provides us the direction to move forward, which is why you see all of the strategy teams that are working to make sure that those press forward, that those goals and objectives are met using the identified strategies, and why we develop an annual agenda to really help the division break down annually. Okay, this year, this is the focus, that's going to move us further along this five-year continuum, right? The, the, to Lisa's point, the change portfolio really is about kind of identifying things that overlap that plan, that are bigger than just that plan, that incorporate multiple goals and multiple strategies, and are things that we need to manage. So it's providing kind of a project management perspective to big ideas. And, and so it allows Lisa, who, by the way, I'll, I'll say, because it's not like you said at the, at the onset, like, ooh, you know, you guys are paying attention to this. Well, the reason we pay attention to this is because the, because the school division is committed to having a strategic planner. And we have an exceptional strategic planner, right? And so not every school division has a strategic planner. I mean, so that responsibility falls to somebody within the district or to a group of people within the district. But if you have a strategic planner who gets up and thinks about this every day, then you stay focused on that strategic thinking. So we're very fortunate to have the school board's commitment to that role. And obviously, as you all know, pretty fortunate to have Lisa in that role, right? But what is needed when you think about something big? So high school redesign being one of the examples, right? So you want to manage that. You don't want that to just exist, sort of exist in perpetuity without knowing who's, who own, who owns it and what the pathway for success, how you define the pathway for success there, and how you're thinking about timetables and what the deliverables are on that. So you want to create a kind of project management portfolio that allows you to keep an eye on that while you're also paying attention to everything else that's in that strategic plan because it's a lot to keep track of. And, and so one of Lisa's jobs will be to work with the key leaders, as she talked about for high school redesign, there's Ms. Woodhouse and Mr. Delaney, to ensure that we understand the deliverables, to ensure we understand the steps that have to be taken in the timeframe for those things to occur, and to have some regular reporting, both to the senior leadership of the division, but also when appropriate to the board as we provide these updates. So it really is about good project management design and making sure that with all of the moving parts, you've got people keeping eyes on the big picture as well. If that makes sense. So I just, because I, because I heard your comment about how did you decide those were the things to prioritize? Sometimes if you hear that, you think, well, then this other stuff is less important? It's all important. And it's how you, how you build out a project management structure that allows you to accomplish everything that's important.
Thank you.
It is. And I just, I just wanted to say to Dr. Snitz, you're absolutely right. This presentation, part of it was presented to the Performing Planner Management Process, PPM. And you gave it to us, and you asked us what other things that would be more important that the school board would want to see. And we, I remember saying something about where we've been, where we are, and where we're going. And I think you placed most of that in there. I'd just like to say, thank you for holding us accountable and letting us be a part of it as well when you presented it to the PPM. And it, it came out really well. And you talked briefly about the, the board, the storyboard, and how that would be. But I had no idea that it would be like, that it's wonderful, it's amazing. And I've seen as we progress through, through the way. So I just wanted to say again, thank you. And, and we are, we are, we are blessed to have a strategic planner and a committee and a team. And we do great things with those teams that collaborate together. And we are inclusive of what's going on. Thank you again.
Thank you. And I want to thank the PPMC too for the opportunity to share a preview of this presentation. They were the ones who said, well, maybe we wanted to hear a little bit more about high school redesign. So initially, I didn't have separate slides for the initiatives, but I wanted to thank the PPMC for that.
For the benefit of the public, we're referring to our Planning and Performance Monitoring Committee. And there was a prior presentation to that committee by Dr. Banacki. So Mrs. Weems and Mrs. Anderson, not to put either of you on the spot, but as the other two committee members, either of you care to weigh in on this?
Holtz. It's Holtz.
I'm sorry, Ms. Holtz. Yes. Beg your pardon.
I'm listening, but I have no comments. Thank you, Mrs. Holtz.
And Dr. Spence is?
Yes, ma'am. I did want to at least point out one other thing, because I imagine it might, if I was watching, it might raise an eyebrow to talk about equity as a project management aim. And so we want to be clear, both in the strategic plan and our thinking and our policies now, equity is an undergirding concept. It's an undergirding reality that we have to work towards. And it is not, it's not something that exists in a department. You know, equity isn't something that you point to and go, that, oh, that lives over there. Go talk to that person, right? It's, it's a, it's a philosophy of how we think about each other. And the, the reason it's a project management piece here is because the policy that was adopted by the board prescribes specific action. So it prescribes an assessment, it prescribes a reporting plan, and then it, and then it prescribes the biannual reporting that accompanies that, and training, and some other things that are very, that are called for specifically in the policy. That's the piece of equity that needs project management, right? Is to make sure that the things that are called for in the pro, in the policy are brought to fruition in a timely manner. So we want to be So we want to be clear, because I, in conversations with colleagues around the country, we talk about this a lot. You know, people want to make equity like a, an initiative or, uh, uh, something that lives in an office. Whereas it really, it should be the underpinning of our work. And so, um, I just wanted to kind of point to the distinction here that the reason it's, uh, you know, in a change portfolio here is because there are some specifically prescribed, uh, actions that need to happen as a result of the, the adopted policy.
Okay. Anybody else? So please thank the rest of the collaborative team. Let me be sure I get them all in here.
The Compass Collaborative, the strategy leads, the strategy managers. I will do so. Thank you.
Yes. So that is our last, uh, scheduled item. I, I know we've, I, I hesitate to go backwards because we stick to an, an, uh, this agenda was, um, posted in advance, and, and we have announced that we've moved beyond some of the previous topics. So it seems unless Mrs. Lanetti cares to weigh in, that we should just, uh, break at this point? Or can we go back to parliamentary as part of the afternoon session?
You can go back to parliamentary. There wasn't a lot left. Um, I'll just briefly mention, the issue came up, and this was very painfully obvious to us at the last meeting, is on the amendments. Your policy act bylaws actually state that you could require that amendment be reduced to writing. It doesn't happen very often, but I think last meeting was a good example of why we need, there are two minutes ago, why we need to be careful about the amendments. I don't know if there's any further discussions you want about that, but I would like to see us get in the habit of writing them. One of the strategies that also works is if you know you have an objection to a motion, if you will write your motion or amendment ahead of time and share it with your colleagues, a lot of times you will find that you, everybody agrees with you, because you've actually pointed out a flaw in them or correction. Mr. Edwards, many years ago, was very good at this when he was chair, about talking to a person who wanted to do an amendment, and he would often say, wait a minute, that makes more sense, why don't we substitute it? Rather than assume that the amendment was a hostile attack on somebody. I've seen, Mrs. Vanning has done this a lot recently, um, I'd like to see you, if you think you're going to make a motion to let your colleagues know ahead of time, send the wording out ahead of time, you can come to me. Another staff member will help you write it, because sometimes in the heat of discussing it, you're not having the time to really realize what the person's saying to you. That was painfully obvious at 2:30 in the morning, that not everybody was hearing what was being said. So I'd like to see you get in the habit of writing it a little more. It may slow down a meeting. We can actually, if we have to, we could type it up on the screen so everybody could look at it, or we can handwrite it. We can go out, make copies and bring it in. But like you discussed a little bit more, or kind of commit to doing that with amendments that are particularly have multiple parts to them, that you write it out, because unfortunately, people hear one thing and see another. And I can tell you, having to watch the school board meeting from midnight to about 2:30 in the morning, two or three times just to get what was being said in order was a little complicated, and different people had different memories of what happened. So I suggest, I gave you the amendment form, that's one form to do it. But another thing I'd like to do, if you know ahead of time that you're going to object to a motion, there's nothing wrong with you circulating to your colleagues ahead of time, this is the amendment I'm offering. This is why I'm doing it. I think it would help calm people down, because a lot of times you're very busy during these meetings. You're busy listening speakers, and you may not be focusing on what the amendment was. And I think there were a lot, the meeting two minutes ago was very good, where they pointed out where a school board member identified mistakes that were hard to understand or in vagueness, and it would have helped if we all understood ahead of time what she was trying to point out. Again, I think that's, I'm seeing examples of some of you doing that. That used to be a habit about seven or eight years ago. That was done more often. I'm not seeing as much, so I'd like to just talk about that real quick. And I'm not sure you're ready to talk about this, but a couple of school board members have mentioned to me that there were concerns about you start, you're going to two or three o'clock in the morning, should we be starting our meetings at other times? This was a good time to talk about it. Um, my understanding from certain school board members is they objected to governance talking about this or PRC talking about. They thought it should be an entire school board meeting and discussion to handle this. I don't know if you're ready to do that, but that might be, do you need to start your meetings earlier? Do you need to cut your meetings off at a certain time so that, uh, you all know the meeting's going to stop? Or we mentioned about postponing agenda items earlier, about recesses and breaks. I do think that's important. Sometimes we've run over for, you know, we're doing 10, 12 hours in a meeting. You do need a break eventually to get things done. So I think you should talk about that at some point. Um, and when school board minutes to adjourn, sometimes issues have to be taken up that day. But if you've gone to two o'clock in the morning, is it your best decision to then vote on a complicated issue? Would it be better to come back the next day, come back another time? There's no reason you can't adjourn. You could stop at midnight and pick back up the next day or another day. There are ways to do that on there. So I'm throwing those issues out. There's a couple of school board members have mentioned those to me. I don't know if you're ready to talk about that, or if you want to sign it to maybe governance or policy review to bring it back to you to talk about. But that's becoming, these are becoming issues that are coming up more often. So those would have been the last things we would have been discussing.
Madam Chair, I have Mrs. Anderson in the queue.
Go ahead, Mrs. Anderson.
Thank you. Um, I, Kami actually hit on this, and I was going to suggest that we have the clerk type up, um, an amendment. Because sometimes amendments do come up in the discussion of a motion. You don't quite know ahead of time, uh, that you're planning to make an amendment. But when things like that do happen, uh, no matter what time it is, whether it's, um, eight o'clock at night or 2:30 in the morning, uh, it would be very helpful if we could have the clerk type it and put it up on the screen for everyone to see the writing of, of the amendment. So that, I, my suggestion would be that we, that we just ask to do that every single time in the future. I think it would help, be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're, we'll.
Uh, I'll make a comment about the, uh, I think what's important here with regard to the, uh, the, the adjournment time, or I, just as a board, I thought it was important that we bring up today the options we have, so that we do understand. I mean, it's hard to codify, because there, you know, it could be a matter that just, that we need to be there that night for whatever the reason, an emergency till whatever hour. But that I, I'm more comfortable now with everybody realizing what our options are when we're late into the night, that we can continue, it would be actually a meeting continuance the next day, or it could be a, a formal adjournment with a, another meeting, which would, I guess, have to be at least three days hence, correct? Mrs. Lanetti for public notice, uh?
Actually, it depends on how you, how you declare it. You could say it's a special meeting on there, you could vote it's an emergency meeting, which kind of depend on the subject. Or you could just continue meeting, say we're going to stop at midnight, we're going to pick it up tomorrow at 9:00 AM. And again, you don't necessarily have to be in person. You could pick up the rest of your meeting. If you're done your speakers and you just want to come back to deliberate, you could do that by Zoom. You don't have to do it. My concern would be if it's, you're going to continue with public notice and the public needs to come in, or there are topics that are not a continuation of the topic on there, I think the public needs to know about that. But if you're just continuing, or you want to pick up the deliberation on the matter, you can either continue that to the next day, find electronically, or set another time for it, as a couple mentioned. You have options on there. Um, you could also say, and this is something you've never done, we're only taking five speakers, we're only taking speakers till nine o'clock at night. That creates a problem with the other 70 people that signed up to speak, but that's the way you could do it. Or you could just decide that once speakers are done, we are not taking up any more deliberative action, we're too tired, it's, you know, it's not a good practice. Those are things I think you could need to talk about. Also, your agenda planning people, you usually have a good idea of what's going to be a controversial topic. You need to plan very well the agenda plan. Do we need to move things? Do we need to start times earlier? Those are all things you can control, but again, there's no reason why you're required to keep your meeting going 10, 14, 15 hours later. You can make, you can control that. So that's something you decide at the time. You might want to have a general agreement, what's a reasonable time to break, and what's a reasonable time to take up business. I don't think that, that's a problem. And that was addressed in prior bylaws, was actually in the standing rules, where you said, we will take speakers until 7:30, we will pick up our business, and then we'll decide how we're going to connect. We either go back to speakers or take up that issue related to the speakers. That was built into your bylaws. You automatically had a way to deal with some of that. You've taken that out. Is it time for you to go back and talk about how long you're willing to go, what's a reasonable amount of time on there, and when you want to do your business? So I think those are things that can be discussed, and I'm not sure if it's best here. Governance could talk about this. PRC has, governance has a meeting next week. PRC would be a week after that. They can talk about it.
Mrs. Franklin?
I would like to just comment on the posting of any amendments. I think that that is wise. I think for the public, because we had so many emails in regards to the consecutive versus just the declining. Um, and, you know, so many people in the public thought that we said it's consecutive, and as it turned out, it was not. Um, so I think that I absolutely agree that we should have any amendments posted, um, for, I mean, especially us, but the, certainly the public as well. And then, um, you know, in regards to the, um, meeting agendas and that sort of thing, I, I really firmly believe that working smarter than, you know, than harder i- is a good rule to live by. Um, just having, you know, I have a short tenure here on the board so far, but just in the short time, I mean, we've had four meetings in, in January, which is fine. But, you know, had we used those meetings to the best use of our time? You know, we went for a very long time on last Tuesday, um, or, no, I'm sorry, the Tuesday prior, and and then we had to come back for, um, a resolution or a special session the following week, just to make sure that we understood. So I kind of feel like if we're going to be using our time, we have so many items to reflect on, to vote on, to consider, that, um, that I feel like we should use our time a little bit smarter in terms of if we get to the point where we have all of our discussion, you know, we had to end up going back and looking at the video anyway. Um, you know, if we would have come back and had further, you know, a further time to be more concrete about what we were voting on and that sort of thing, I think that would have been a much better use of our time than to continue on till, you know, till two or three or four in the morning, um, just going back and forth. I think it, it would have been better just to have that concrete, um, information to make a, a good vote on, right, you know, uh, uh, maybe at a, a later time. So I would agree that I would, if, in just my, in my opinion, that using some of the other options is smart to make sure that we're all on the same page, to make sure we understand what we're discussing and voting on, um, in the future. So, thank you.
Madam Chair, uh, Ms. Weems has her hand raised? Go ahead, Mrs. Weems.
Yes, totally agree on getting amendments and, um, writing so that everybody understands. As far as the postponing or taking only a certain amount of speakers, I think we need to hear each and every speaker who comes before us or via Zoom, no matter how long or how many. Um, also, I'm not really, I mean, I mean, the problem why this has been so unique is because usually we don't have 100 speakers at meetings, whereas lately we've had 100 speakers. So that's six or seven hours added right there before we even talk about a, a, a regular meeting or discussion of anything. So, um, I'm not sure if ending a meeting at midnight and then coming back the next morning at eight or nine in the morning. I'm not sure, some people would even be able to, um, think clearly at nine in the morning versus, because I know some of my colleagues are not morning people. Um, and then plus you've got the, I mean, some people have to work. So if, if they, if they start a meeting at three or four, they've already had to take off work, and then they've stayed up all night, they get home, you have to, I know, I have to unwind for at least an hour or two, and then you're getting back up at seven to, to resume business. I'm not in favor of that. I'm in favor of, of, um, dealing with it, listening to everybody. I mean, they do it in Richmond, they do it in Washington all, all night long, making decisions. So I think we can do that. And I don't think it's going to be this way, um, after COVID. I've been on the board for almost 20 years, and it's very, this is very unique. We, we, we do not do this normally. So, um, so I think listen to everybody and, um, finish the meeting and make sure we have everything in writing before we vote, so we know what we're voting on. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll speak to the question about the, uh, the, the start time for the workshops. Uh, because traditionally, the agenda planning committee, which again, a school board member rotates, uh, every school board member is part of this cycle, uh, on a rotating basis with the chair and the superintendent. And, and I think, uh, you know, just need the, need to know that collectively, the board understands that, um, to, to, to at least, um, defer some discretion to this agenda planning committee. Uh, you know, if, if 3:30 just is, is a better start time than four because of a, a, a hot topic, or, you know, I mean, and again, it's always, it's, we, we try to gauge to the best we can the time period, but we can, you can see from today's retreat, you know, some things the estimate was, was under, and then other times our estimated time was over. We, you know, we do the best we can. Uh, now, you know, we, we haven't been proposing two o'clock workshop start times, because we, we want to, uh, I think the, the ti, the start times we had were reasonable under the circumstances, but there was always another school board member there to, to intervene and, and, and indicate if it was an issue. We do have the option of extending workshops into later in the formal meeting. There's actually a placeholder for that on the agenda. Uh, so, so that is another option. Uh, but again, that's later in the evening, after a lot of other business has been conducted. It interrupts somewhat the flow of a conversation, but we, we have done that on, on a few occasions through the, in the, in this pandemic. Uh, so I, I think, again, I get back to that options point, right? That we, we, we have staff members that we can trust, and we have board members participating in these decisions too, on a rotating basis, and that we, that we leave a little bit of discretion, uh, instead of, and I believe the present bylaw language also allows for that discretion, but I just wanted to convey that.
That's our souvenir bylaws on tonight, 139.
Madam Chair, um, Ms. Owens has her hand raised, as does Ms. Anderson. All right, Ms. Owens, and then Mrs. Anderson.
Thank you. Um, I'm certainly open to scheduling the, the meetings and workshops at whatever time we need to adjust to, to make them, um, fit best for the needs that we have going on. But I, I want to make sure that I'm also representing the, uh, comments that I've received from the community, uh, which is that when we start our workshops prior to 4:00 PM, uh, we limit the ability of teachers to be able to, uh, watch the workshops. And when we know that teachers are, you know, invested in a different way, uh, than the general public, um, and are, are, are very affected, and want to have the ability to watch the workshops. Uh, and for anybody who wants to be able to watch the workshops, but has a regular job, anytime we do it prior to 4:00 PM, we're, we're limiting their ability to do that. And if they were coming to present, uh, opinions and have their voices heard, we're limiting their ability to have the, the most recent information about the topic. And so I, I think it's just, uh, something to keep in mind when we consider doing workshops earlier in the day because of the amount of information that we are going to discuss. I am not crazy about us, uh, making decisions and going past midnight. I'm certainly open to it. But I, I do think it's worth considering if that's the best, uh, the best timing to be making important decisions. So, for whatever that's worth.
Okay. Okay.
Ms. Anderson, I'm sorry. Yes, Ms. Anderson, and then also Ms. Weems has her hand raised also. Okay, ladies, first, beginning with Mrs. Anderson.
Okay, well, um, so I just wanted to say, it was pointed out to me that, um, when, when we do go late, uh, if that happens again, um, we, we can recess, and we can name when we're coming back. It doesn't have to be recessed until nine o'clock in the morning. We can recess until the next evening, um, starting at six, whatever. When we decide, if, if we decide to vote to recess, um, as a board, we can, we can choose when we decide to come back. So we don't necessarily have to come the next morning. Uh, just wanted to make that clear, that was brought up a few minutes ago. Uh, just wanted to make that clear, that was brought out a few minutes ago. And, and also the fact that, you know, I think we need to be able sometime, not all the time, but sometimes we need to be able to have, um, our workshops starting at 3:30, and they are recorded. Um, just, you know, so for parents that, or teachers who want to watch them, that they are recorded. But, um, I, I think that we have to, we have to keep in mind what the topics are about, so that we can, um, have time to, um, be dedicated to, to hear all the information. And so sometimes we do need to start at 3:30. We sometimes even have to start at 3:00. We did, we did that a couple of years ago, we started one of our workshops at 3:00. So I, I think, I, I'm not saying we need to do it all the time. I'm just saying that every once in a while, we need to be open for that.
Okay, and Mrs. Weems?
We're approaching the, uh, the concluding time for the workshop. So to out, to prepare for, I'm sorry, for the retreat.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything, Ms. Ryan. I don't have anything.
No?
Time, I was just, for, for anybody else who needed to speak, I would, that was, my point was to let us know that now, too, so we can squeeze everybody in. Are you sure?
I'm sure. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, we thank you again, Mrs. Lanetti. And, uh, so this workshop is adjourned, and we will be reconvening it. I keep saying, and I'm sorry, the mini-retreat is, is adjourned, with, with, uh, goo- good work accomplished, other good work in progress. And, uh, we will be reconvening at 4:00 and 40 minutes for today's workshop. Thank you all.